Okay, we're set. Thank you.
Good evening. This is a special meeting of Livingston's planning board and notice of this meeting has been distributed in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. I'll just note there are a couple of members of the board that are not present this evening. Mr. Lewis, Ms. Coochie, Ms. Begoli, Ms. Wischnew, and Vice Chair Sintola are now present. Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Ratner?
Here.
Mr. Reber?
Here.
Mr. Diner?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. We have our court. We have our board attorney, Catherine Madre, from the planning department.
Thank you. And if we can call the first matter, please?
That matter scheduled for this evening is a minor subdivision with variances for 60 Chestnut Street, Block 6900, Lot 42. Application number 2023-33-M-S-U-B-V.
Thank you, Mr. Passau. If you'd like to just enter your appearance, please?
Yes, Matthew Passau of the law firm Sales, Commiss and Gross, representing the applicant, Anthony and Lisa Yu.
Thank you. And just to go through the procedure for tonight's hearing, as you've seen, the applicant is represented by an attorney who will explain the application. The applicant's attorney will call one or more witnesses to give sworn testimony in support of the application. Members of the board may ask the witness questions. When the attorney for the applicant has no more questions for the witness, interested parties in favor of or in opposition to the application may question the witness about that witness's testimony. At this part of the proceeding, only questions for the witness may be put forward. When all the applicant's witnesses have testified and have been questioned, if there is any entity or group formally appearing as a party in support or in opposition to the application, that party may call witnesses. When all the witnesses of all parties have been heard, members of the public may give sworn statements for or against the application. Persons who give such statements may be asked questions by the board, the lawyer, or by other members of the public. So, Mr. Passau, you made your appearance. Thank you. Are there any anyone else here looking to make a formal appearance as a party either in support of or in opposition to the application?
Seeing none.
Mr. Passau.
Great. Thank you so very much. By way of background, this application actually originally received land use approvals back in 2014 for the minor subdivision, as well as the related variance relief for minimum lot lines, for minimum lot size, and also irregular lot lines. Part of that subdivision approval, though, had multiple conditions in order to require the subdivision deed, including the development of the proposed home lot 4201, and then after the issuance of the TCO, the permission then to demo the existing home, and then to submit for the recording of the subdivision deed once a permanent CO was issued. Unfortunately, not all of those conditions actually occurred within the 190-day window, so therefore, nine years later, we are now seeking approval of that minor subdivision so that we can record the subdivision deed. With that being said, I think that it would be prudent for us to definitely err on the side of caution and just go through the exercise of doing the minor subdivision here tonight to make sure that we are protected pursuant to the minutes of land use law. So, with that being said, we'll walk you through the minor subdivision and what has been done to date since 2014. And I would like to enter my first and my only witness for tonight, Mr. Paul Anderson, as both an engineer and planner.
Before we proceed, just for the record, are you seeking to reopen the application?
No, we're seeking a new.
You're seeking to present a new application, but you're using the same application number and the same plans and everything else that was submitted?
Everything's the same.
That's not what he asked you.
No, I understand that. So, you're asking me, am I going...
Because I don't know that all of that documentation has been given to the board members. That's why I'm bringing it up. I don't know whether they think it's necessary but I wanted to raise that point before we get started.
I guess I'll leave it to the board's discretion, but I do know that those documents were provided as part of this application.
Should we swear?
Richard, if you can administer the oath, please.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear to testimony about giving this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Now, give us your full name again for the record.
Paul W. Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N.
Mr. Anderson, could you please provide your educational credentials and whether or not your license is still in good standing?
Yes, a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, Clarkson University, 1983. I became a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey and New York in 1988. I passed the Professional Planners exam approximately 14 years ago, and both my planning and my engineering license are both in good standing. I have testified before this board before, apparently 12 or 14 years ago, or whatever it was, and many other times in between, and as well as your zoning board, and been accepted as an expert witness in engineering and planning.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any objections?
Yes, I can. Me, too.
And you're offering them as an engineer and a planner?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you. He's accepted by the board.
Great. Thank you so much. Paul, were you the engineer who had drafted the proposed plans both in 2014 and have also reviewed it since then? Yes, and prepared this plan that's submitted today. Great. Thank you. Could you please walk us through the proposed subdivision? Absolutely. We have, this property is Block 6900, Lot 42. It's 52,101 square feet. It's located in the R1 Zone District. I have with me some exhibits. So, the first one is just the plan that's in your plan set that was submitted to the town. It's the minor subdivision plan on the left. It's the existing conditions, which is basically a relatively new home that was built after the first subdivision on the left side. And on the right side is the proposed subdivision layout, which is identical to the one that was previously approved back in 2014. Is that SP1? This is SP1 of the drawings that were submitted. Now, with this application, we have the two lots. It's an R1. This requires 35,250 square feet. We have a total on Lot 4202, which is the lot on the right, I believe, is 26,016 square feet, and Lot 4201 is 26,085. If you look, if you have the plan in front of you, you can look at the zone map that's in, the tax map that's at the bottom right corner of this. And in each of the lots that are in the neighborhood, you can see the areas of those existing lots. Now, the lots 43, immediately next to it is 23,500. Lot 44, 21,313. Lot 17, across the street, 26,802. Lot 41, on the right-hand side, or which I think is the more of the eastern side of this property, is 29,375. And it goes on. There's numerous other lots represented there. Many of them, most of them are substandard in lot area, similar to the lot area that we're proposing for these lots. Also, if you look at that tax map, you can see that the lot lines for a lot of the adjacent properties are not perpendicular to the street. And those are the two, the lot area and the angle of the lot liner, the relief we're seeking with this application. Now, if I was to go to my next thing, which I'm going to have to, this is not submitted, so I'm going to have to mark this as an exhibit.
A1 with today's date?
A1 is 1918?
Yeah.
So, 1923. Okay, so, when we did this...
Could you please describe?
So, this is a, this is a minor subdivision plan that was approved in 2014. So, and on their existing conditions map, or, you know, before subdivision plan, you can see that there was a long house kind of to the right side, but extended into the middle. And then we proposed the same subdivision line that we're proposing currently.
Mr. Anderson, you talk about 2014, but since the resolution was in 2013...
Yeah.
I think you may be wrong about the year.
You're probably correct, Mr. Klein. I'm not sure of the exact date. Map was totally 2014. In my head, it was 2012. 2013 splits the middle, so if that's what we're going with, I guess we can do that.
Is that dated?
Last revision, 3/18/13.
3/18/13 is the last revision?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and so, the original approval, the Yu's have lived at this property for many years, and they wanted to subdivide the parcel off. It was originally two lots. Zoning changed, so they merged the lots. So, they came back many years later, and they wanted to do the subdivision. And in 2013, we got that approval. The approval allowed them to live in their existing house while the other house is being built. So, not only did they get the lot area variance and the lot line not being perpendicular relief, but they also got temporary relief for the existing house with a small addition of it taken off with a less-than-standard side dirt setback. And with the understanding that when the first house got its CO, they would tear down the second, you know, tear down the existing house or the house that preexisted. And then they would be able to build a conforming house on the second lot. So, that's, that's where we were. And now, we're proposing the same thing, only we're starting at a point where we don't have an existing house that's non-conforming. We still want to create the lots. This is a conforming house. This proposed lot has the ability to build a house of 3,900 and some square feet and meet the requirements and meet all the setback requirements, so it has adequate area to build a representative house for, for the neighborhood. And I think when we look at the planning elements of this, it's justified as it was in 2013 with the flexible C or C2 variance. I think it promotes several elements of the municipal land use law. Purpose A, the appropriate development of land. It adds a new housing stock in accordance with the current zoning. Purpose E, appropriate population densities. It's a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood with a house that's appropriately sized for the neighborhood, with a lot that's approximately comparable to all the other lots in the neighborhood. Purpose of zoning I promotes a desirable visual environment. I think having a consistent streetscape with uniformed houses setback is, is more desirable than just an open lot sitting next to the house that's, that's currently there. And it's an efficient use of land. Purpose of zoning M, because you're allowed to, you will have a new lot for another family to come into the community without having to build any additional infrastructure. You don't need a road. You don't need to extend sewers, water, anything like that. In addition to the municipal land use law, it also satisfies several of Livingston's master plan objectives to provide space in appropriate locations in the township for residences. And purpose 11, to promote a welcoming and aesthetically pleasing environment. Also, there's a principles in your master plan is to encourage development in locations and densities that are compatible with existing. So, we have, I believe it meets that. The lots are similar size to the lots next door, similar-sized homes, appropriately sized per the zone. And because it will fit into the context of this neighborhood very well, I don't see any substantial negative impact from, from the granting of these variances. So, the benefits of meeting those points of the municipal land use law and your master plan significantly outweigh any impacts that are associated with the granting of the variances, and you can grant the variances without substantial detriment to the, to the master plan, the public good, or the community at large.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Do we understand that the lot number identification used originally is the same lot number identifications you're using now?
Yes.
And the same variances in terms of area?
That's correct.
And the waiver is the same in regard to the lot line between the two?
That's correct. The angle that it comes off the front is the same.
Do you still need the, what we call the conditional variance to allow temporarily two homes on one lot?
No.
No, that is the home.
That lot is now vacant.
Yes, correct.
Did you give the percentage of houses within the 200 or 500, I guess 200-foot area, percentage that are the same size or smaller than the requested subdivided lots?
I didn't give you a percentage, but I do have on, on the map, let's see, I got of the ones within 200 feet. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six of the eight are substandard in lot size, in lot area, within 200 feet.
For the record, could you just advise us as to the actual date of that exhibit?
This is the plans submitted to the board.
That's SP1?
This is SP1 of the submitted plans. This is SP1, the submitted plan for it. I didn't mark it as an exhibit.
August 14th of '23. Put the date on it.
Yes, August 14th, 2023, correct.
No, we marked the old one as an exhibit.
The old one I marked as an exhibit.
Yep, but that was part of the initial site plan application submitted this year.
Right, that was March 18th, 2013. 3/18/13 was the date of the, oh, that's the last revision date.
I did. Yeah, it was ACS, my firm, and I was the signatory.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public for this witness regarding his testimony? Seeing none, are there any members of the public that wish to make a sworn statement for or against the application? Seeing none, Mr. Passau, any closing remarks?
I will advise a motion.
So, absent objection, in the absence of any motion for continuance, the evidentiary record is closed. No further testimony or evidence shall be heard. The board members now have an opportunity to state and discuss their views on the application prior to a decision. Thoughts?
It appears to me that what we have received is the very same presentation as we approved back in 2013, except that now there is no longer a house on one of the lots and therefore no longer the conditional variance that had been granted. On the basis of the evidence provided, I would move that we approve the application with the two variances as to the area of the lots within 235 feet of the front street right-of-way line, and with a waiver in regard to the angle of the lot line between the two.
Is there any further discussion by the board? Next, roll.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Reber?
Yes.
Mr. Diner?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are we going to see you back in another seven or eight years? We'll try to do back.
The next matter scheduled for this evening is preliminary and final site plan with variances and amendment for Jubilee Court, Block 6100, Lot 30.03. Application number 2014-76-P-F-S-P-V. Amendment number two for Pulte Homes of New Jersey Limited Partnership, located in the R5G Zone.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yes.
Everybody that was here when I read through the instructions on the first matter or still here, no one knew I was walked in, so I'm not going to go through the process of, or the procedure for tonight, but we will remind you if, if necessary. So, if we can please have your answer for the record.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. For the record, my name is James Mullin. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey. I am employed by Pulte Group in the Northeast Corridor Division. This evening, with me, I have two witnesses. One is Joe Lippman, who is with me right here, who's the Director of Land Development for Pulte Group as well, and Eric Keller, who is our professional engineer and planner with Bowman Engineering. Property in question is Lot 30.03 in Block 6100. It is part of the Joseph Kushner Hebrew Academy property and is the affordable housing, three buildings on that particular piece of property. The street address is Jubilee Court, as was mentioned. The applicant, Pulte Homes of New Jersey, was the actual constructing and developer of the Livingston Square project, as you're probably aware, and also built the affordable units on behalf of the school, of the Kushner Academy. The actual owner of the property now, of the affordable housing, is called Peachtree Apartments LLC, and they have consented to this application. It's actually a subsidiary of the Joseph Kushner Hebrew Academy. And the academy owns, obviously, Lot 30.01. Just to clean up, we did do legal notice for this. We placed everything in the West Essex Tribune and also had the list of 200 people. So, board does have jurisdiction of this matter. I presented all the evidence to Jackie Hollis. Just as a little history, so we had prior approval of this matter, preliminary and final subdivision and site plan with the variance was approved by this board by resolution in September 1st of 2015, and that was for 170 townhouses and the 51 affordable units, which, by the way, have all been built and sold and closed. So, all those units. The affordables, I believe some of them have been rented to date, but they're all built and CO'd. Then, we came back for an amended approval in March of 2019, pretty much to amend the phasing, the schedule for building the affordables, and then finally for another amendment in July of that same year for a minor subdivision lot line adjustment. Tonight, we're here for just another amendment, and it really does, has only to do with the trash enclosures on the site, which have been built. There were three of them approved originally with the site plan. We'd like to actually eliminate one and relocate one. And with that, there is a variance that was identified for setback, because it's going to be close to the property line, closer than 28 feet. And there was a waiver that was identified in the planners report, but I think we're going to give testimony tonight that that is not necessary, because we are actually building it, and we'll, we'll show you some evidence, of the same materials as the buildings themselves. So, that is my introduction, unless you have any questions for me?
Not at the moment. I just want to ask if anybody, anybody entering a formal appearance as a party either in support of or in opposition to the application. If you have questions, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions of the witnesses. I'm just asking if there's anybody that's making a formal appearance tonight. Okay, great. So, why don't we, why don't we get started?
Proceed with my first witness, Joel Lippman. Do you want to swear, please?
You swear to testimony about giving this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Now, give us your full name. It's by your last name for the record.
Joel T. Lippman, spelled L-I-P, as in Peter, M-A-N.
And I'm offering Mr. Lippman as a fact witness tonight. He is a player of Pulte Group. So, if you could just, for the record, you know, give your title, how many years you've worked with the company, educational background, and what your role is with the company.
Certainly. Good evening. As Jim mentioned, my name is Joel Lippman. I'm the Director of Land Development for Pulte's Northeast Corridor Division. And in that role, I'm responsible for land development design, land development construction for our residential projects in New Jersey and eastern Pennsylvania. My educational background is in civil engineering. I hold a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University and a master's degree from NJIT in civil engineering. I am not, however, a licensed professional engineer. My career experience spans 30 years, 20 of which specific to land development, design, and construction.
Okay. So, if you could just explain to the board, you're definitely familiar with this site and have worked on this particular development and community, correct?
Correct.
And then, if you could just explain, you know, what we're here for tonight, how we got here, the reasons why we are looking for this amendment?
So, we come before you tonight seeking this amendment based on some significant negative feedback we received from some of our homeowners related to their proximity to the dumpster enclosures at Buildings 2 and 3 of the affordable rental apartments. And in listening to what they had to say, we realized that we did not do the best job of communicating how proximate those dumpster enclosures would be to their residents, to their, you know, to their residents. They did not actually realize that that was going to be the case until we constructed those dumpster enclosures after they were already living in their homes. But we felt an obligation to seek this amendment to try and, try and do right by them and do a better job of locating the dumpsters in an area that has less impact on them, but also doesn't have a negative impact on the people in the affordable rental apartments. So, when we looked initially at citing a new enclosure and combining two into one, we selected an area just to the north of the affordable apartment building three on Jubilee Court. We felt that was a good location, because the route of travel by foot for occupants or residents of the affordable apartments disposing of their trash or the recyclables would be similar to where it is in the current configuration. The route that we chose is barrier-free and accessible. It's easily accessible for the garbage truck, either loading from the front or from the rear. We also sought the input of representatives from the Joseph Kushner Hebrew Academy, you know, since it's close to their, close to the school. We got their, their agreement and consent for the design that we're presenting this evening. We also were concerned that we could actually combine two dumpster enclosures into one. In meeting with Kushner Academy folks who met with their property managers managing the rental apartments, who was able to go to their trash hall or confirm for us that they could manage two buildings out of one enclosure. It's going to be a slightly bigger dumpster, but it's still a comfortable fit within the single enclosure, so.
And the enclosure size is going to change at all?
No, the enclosure will be the same size, design, look as the ones that we've already constructed on site. We do plan some screening towards the back or the north side of the proposed new enclosure between our property boundary and the Kushner Academy boundary that was based on input that, that they provided to us. That will be in the form of evergreen trees, eight to, eight to 10-foot evergreens along the... eight to 10-foot evergreens along the, again, along the boundary to screen the new proposed location from their property.
And the only other question, the issue about the materials of the enclosure itself?
Yes, it was a comment on the review about the enclosure being just CMU block. We do plan to face it with brick, as we had for the other ones that have been constructed already. And the plan actually, that was presented, actually called out to brick. Perhaps it was overlooked in the review.
So we think that that waiver is not necessary because we are going to comply with the ordinance on that? I thought so. I have no other questions? Any other?
No.
This thing?
Correct.
We'll remove the two and replace it with one.
And we'll have my engineer come up and he'll show you on the plans exactly where they were and where the new one will be.
Do the tenants or homeowners carry their own yard space?
Yes.
Or out to the dumpster?
That's correct. They'll carry it out and...
Out, all the way out?
Yes.
How about the distance issue, say, Building 2? Is that dramatically more than it would have been? Has it not proposed this change?
No, it's similar. They're leaving, they're exiting the building from a different exit, but the distance that they travel is similar.
And we can show you that on the plane without it.
Yes, I went to see the exits.
So you're going to end up one trash hole down three?
Two, two.
Are you two? Two will be combined?
Two will be combined into one?
Correct.
And is the third one being, the one being moved, or is that thing...
No, that one's staying in its current location.
And you'll have that pointed out?
I think we're all going to have questions for the engineer as he presents that information.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public for this witness as to his testimony? Okay, hearing none. Thank you.
And Mr. Lippman will be available to answer questions.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I don't screw this up.
We had a technology guy in the back, so no worries.
It's all him. I didn't do anything yet.
So I swear him in before you...
Yes, please.
You swear the testimony about to give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, your full name and the record, please?
Eric L. Keller, K-E-L-L-E-R, Vice President with Bowman Consulting Group.
And just for the record, your educational background, licenses that are still in effect?
Certainly.
Appearances before this board, I believe, right?
I have been here several times on the amended 2019 application and other applications which escape me at the moment. The Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, attended a master's program at the University of Maryland, been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 1987, and a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 1988. And both licenses are in good standing.
So I wish you accept Mr. Keller as an expert in planning and in...
Planning and engineering?
Yes.
Any questions from the board? Any objections from the board? Okay, thank you. You accept as a planner and engineer?
So just a few questions. Did you prepare the plans that were submitted and the exhibits that were, you're going to show tonight?
Yes, they were prepared under my supervision. I think they are, the plans that were submitted were prepared by my partner at the time, who's no longer with the firm. So as a senior person in our New Jersey office, I'm taking responsibility, so.
And you're familiar with the Livingston zoning ordinance, municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey?
Absolutely.
And also very familiar with this property?
Yes, I've been working on this property for the past six years.
If you could describe what we're planning to do?
So just, this is...
And should we mark these?
We have to mark this.
Are they part of the plans you submitted?
This is a different plan, because I want to give it context. This is Sheet 6 of 27, which is the layout and dimensioning plan, signed by myself. It is dated November 7th of 2018, last revised, oops, sorry, September 17th of 2019. This is the plan that we got approved back in 2019.
Okay, that would be A1.
A1. Yes. So, let's see if I get this right. Oh, that's, no. All right, well, this'll work. So there are three dumpsters. One to the northwest of Building 1. There's one to the southwest of Building 3, and one to the southeast of Building 2. The dumpster by Building 2 and also by Building Number 10, and the one by Building 3 and Building 7A. Those are the two that are being eliminated. And I will show you the plans that we submitted. They're, those two are being eliminated and combined into one behind Building 3.
And just a question, so, and they are also shown as being within 28 feet of the property line?
Correct. Wrong one. So this, the dumpster by Building 3 is about five feet to the property line, which is along the eastern side of Gala Court. The one by Building 2 and by Building 10 is about seven feet to the property line, which runs along the southern edge of this parking lot.
Thank you.
Bear with me a second while I get this. Now, these plans, it's a set of five, were part of what was, this is what was submitted to the board for this application. Yes, okay. So we have the cover sheet, we have the key map, and then Building 3 is a site preparation plan, which just shows the trash enclosure to be removed and the one by Building 2 being removed. Sheet 4 of the set... So the dumpster enclosure by Building 2, we're actually getting another parking space in this area, and then the remainder of the island area is going to be grass. Over by Building 3, we're extending the sidewalk because right now that area is where the dumpster pad is, and the rest of that will be a lawn. Now, the new dumpster enclosure... Come on.
They fall to a different sheet?
Yeah. No, sorry. Here we go. Trying to be... Andrew made it seem so easy, but there's only so much you can do with a technologically challenged engineer. So... Okay. I don't know what's going on, but... So... I'm not going to touch it.
Got it right where you want it.
So this is the new location. It's shown on an angle, which will facilitate trash pickup, whether it's a front load or a rear load. This is located to the north of Building 3. So it is similar placement. We're removing the one on the southwest corner of Building 3 and putting on the northeast corner. So yes, some of the units overlook the dumpster. It's just going to be different units and overlook it today. We are providing a sidewalk. This is an enhancement that doesn't exist on the existing dumpsters. We're providing a sidewalk on, into the side of the unit so that residents don't have to open up the double leaf gates and can go in from the side. Now... Just to the point of access. Currently, the residents of Building 2 are coming out... Oh, wrong one. Nope, that's not what I wanted. There we go. So they're coming out the building on this side, crossing the drive aisle and going down to the dumpster that's currently located here. In this case, they're going to go out the other side of the building, walk on a sidewalk, come across, cross the driveway here, and they can either walk up the driveway and go in through the front, or they can continue along the sidewalk and come in the side. For Building 3, instead of going out the south side of the building, they're going to go out the north side of the building into the dumpster. So it is comparable or a little bit better with a little bit less vehicular conflict on the crossing. Now, as you can see, if you look carefully on the plan, the way this was drawn, it is actually over the property line a little bit onto the Kushner Academy site. We have fixed that, and I have another exhibit, which is similar to Sheet 4.
And that would be A2?
Correct. A2.
And... What is that?
So this is revised Sheet 4 with today's date.
Is that Sheet 4 of today's set?
It's Sheet 4 of the set of plans that we already did, Sheet 4 or 5, but with a revision date of today.
9/19/23?
Yes, sir. And looking closely at this plan, the wall of the enclosure is on the Lot 30.03 side and not on the school. This is the backside of the Hebrew Academy. You know, there's air handlers and other units on the side. This driveway is not a through driveway. There is... See if I can do this carefully. There is a service drive here, and there's a gate across the school driveway to restrict access from Jubilee Court into the Kushner Academy. So there is no through traffic back here. The, as the board planner indicated, there was a misunderstanding of our plans. The detail of the dumpster is to finish it with brick as the existing dumpsters are finished with brick. The structure of the wall is CMU block, but it's faced with brick. So the CMU that you see in the elevations on Sheet 5 is actually the inside of the enclosure, not the outside. So the outside, if you look at the other portion of the detail, it shows the brick face. While this is also a variance for setback of an accessory structure, it's one setback to the backside of the Kushner Academy as opposed to the other two existing dumpsters that are in a variant situation next to residential buildings, the one on Building 7A per Exhibit A1 on Gala Court, and also the one next to Building 2, which is only seven feet off the property line. And they're proximate to residential townhomes. And as Mr. Lippman indicated, there was some negative comments from the residents of Livingston Square about the placement of those. So we're eliminating those deviations and replacing them with a deviation to the backside of the school. One thing that Mr. Lippman mentioned, and I just want to reiterate, while it's not shown on our plans, there will be evergreen plantings, eight to 10-foot-high evergreens, behind the dumpster. Some will be on the school property, some will be on the affordable housing property. And that will provide additional buffer between the backside of the school and the dumpster enclosure. I will note that none of the dumpster enclosures today have any screening. They're just masonry enclosures adjacent to the buildings. So the waiver that the board planner indicated, we don't believe is necessary, or it is not necessary because we're going to face this new structure in brick. As to the, but we do need a variance for setback of an accessory structure. So I'm going to put on my planning hat briefly. So this advances the purposes of the municipal land use law, in my opinion. Specifically, purpose is A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of land. And purpose I, for, to provide a desirable visual environment. This is a superior location that can be buffered better than the two current locations. I would also like to point out that this lot is 100% affordable units, so that is an inherently beneficial use under the municipal land use law. As far as the negative criteria, I believe, in my professional opinion, this can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. This is a more buffered location, and it can be granted without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Thank you.
I believe you need two setback variances?
Microphone.
Microphone. You need two setback variances for two of the dumpsters, is that correct?
No, just, just one.
One is on the property line you testified, correct?
Well, damn, hold on. So the only, we have a setback variance for this enclosure to the property line, which runs, you know, on an angle, and I'm trying to do this as steadily as I can, right here. That's the only variance for that accessory structure.
What is this, what is the actual setback?
It's, I would say, six inches.
And what is required?
28.
28?
28 feet.
Okay, so you need a variance of 27 feet, six inches?
Correct.
Didn't you, I thought you testified another one was seven feet from the property line. Did I mishear you?
The, the, hold on, I got to go back to a different... I'm going to go back to Sheet 4 of the plan that was submitted to the board. This dumpster off by Building 10. You can't read it, but this is Building 10 here. That dumpster today is approximately seven feet off of the property line. There is also the existing dumpster by Building Three that is five feet off the property line. The property line runs along the northeast side of Gala Court. This is Gala Court. So, this is about five feet here.
Are you telling us that you have variances for those two now?
Correct.
If I ask a tenant in Building One where they take their trash, what do they do with it today?
So, Building One, now I got to go back to Exhibit A1. The existing dumpster, which is going to remain, is off the northwest corner of Building One. Right there. That is also practically on the property line. That is where Building One goes.
So, at present, you have three dumpsters?
We have three dumpsters, one for each building. What we're proposing is to leave the one for Building One because it's tucked up against a retaining wall below the tennis courts for the Kushner Academy. Combine the other two in the in the lower corners of Buildings Two and Three and relocate it and combine it into the one on the north side of Building Three. So.
Is the new garbage dumpster containment area, is that already built?
No.
It's not?
No.
I mean, and you can't move that six inches so it's not on the neighbor's property?
No, we did. That was Exhibit A2 where I showed that we shifted it away off of the Kushner Academy property onto.
So, it's all on your property now?
Yes, sir.
You also indicated that you're not going to have, it's going to be the same size as the other containment areas, garbage areas. So, are you going to have more pickups to accommodate than need?
They're going to be larger dumpsters, and they're larger not in footprint but in height. So, I don't know the specific size of what's there now, but they've discussed it with the private hauler that is providing garbage service. And those dumpsters, they're taller, but they're still lower than the top of the wall, so they will not be visible. They're just larger. They have more depth.
Do you know how tall they would be?
Four foot six.
And the access to put the garbage into those dumpsters is on the top?
Yes.
You feel like the actual dumpsters.
In other words, the people that have to bring the garbage now are doing it for a container that's probably three feet off the ground or four feet off the ground. It's going to be six inches higher than that.
It'll be a little over a foot taller.
Taller.
But.
And have to lift the lid up and.
What was the reason that you're moving it? Because it's just visual, it's a visual thing? It smells, it's, what is the, people were complaining, I guess.
We, yes, Pulte received complaints, negative comments about the location of the dumpsters from the residents.
Just that they don't want garbage in there?
Well, I mean.
Whatever, maybe.
Yeah, sight, sound, and smell. You know, they are, as you can see, looking at it. I mean, from the corner of.
Building Three, I can understand.
Well, I mean, Building Three, I mean, we're moving it from this side to this side.
But how many feet away is it going to be?
It's going to be an increased distance away. Going back to Sheet Four, it's not dimensioned, but I believe it's approximately 30 feet off of the north side of Building Three, where the existing one is probably about 10 feet. So, there's a greater separation to the new dumpster behind Building Three, to the north of Building Three as opposed to the current location.
Do you know approximately how close the trash enclosure to Building 10 is?
Well, it's seven feet to the property line. And that building is, I would say, maybe 12. So, it's probably twenty, less than 25 feet to the end of Building 10. And the one by Building Three is, the roads are 24 feet wide, 29. It's probably 35 feet to the Building 7A as shown on the Exhibit A1 on this sheet. But there's a balcony on the back of Building 7A, and if they sit on the balcony, they're looking right down into that dumpster.
If the board were not to approve moving that dumpster, what else might be done in order to protect the interest of the people in Building 10 and Building 9? He smiles, but I don't see an answer.
I, you know. They're real, I don't know what else could be done to ameliorate the condition, you know, the view, the sound, any smells that may come from that. I will note that currently, in discussion with the property manager, they're doing garbage pickup three times a week. Or will be doing it three times.
No, they are.
They are.
There are residents.
Okay, there are residents.
It's a relatively short walk from the staircase at the back of Building Two to that dumpster. You were describing a significantly longer walk with a number of deviations and turns along which a person would have to carry their trash. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a little bit longer. Once they leave the building, but I think it's a better location. It's less conflict with traffic. I mean, if you look at this, I mean, you know, walking from here, the east side of Building Two over to the dumpster, you have a fairly long crossing where you're in the parking lot at a corner. I mean, somebody coming out of Building Two out of the north side could just go down the sidewalk, get to the driveway, and then go straight across and go right in through the front of the dumpster, which is the only option they have today. We thought it was an enhancement. I guess it's better if I go back to Sheet Four of the set that we submitted. To add this mandor, if somebody was unable or unwilling to open up a chain-link leaf gate. You know, this is just a mandor on the side. This route is accessible. This driveway is not an accessible route. So, it's an ability for somebody, yes, it's a little bit longer walk, but it is one that is flatter and easier to negotiate.
You talked about, a bit about traffic safety. And as I recall, it was at the insistence of this board that it was made possible for people in the market rate area to drive through Jubilee Court to get out.
That is correct.
Whatever traffic hazard is created by people having to walk to the trash bins, we help generate.
Well.
I don't know whether that's a fact that we're going to take into consideration or not, but it's something that we ought to admit.
Certainly, Mr. Klein.
What is someone who's maybe 5'2" or 5'4" going to do to get garbage into those taller containers?
They would be able to reach up and put it in? They're taller than.
They're not going to be able to reach high enough, particularly if they're elderly. So, how do you propose to handle it?
And here's the other, once they have the operation going, the tenants can talk to the manager, and they might have two dumpsters, maybe a shorter one or smaller. And then, obviously, it's possible to accommodate.
Well, anything is possible, but you have to plan for the problems that do exist.
Well, and they'll talk to the trash wall who will have opportunities for that. I think just that, that would have been done regardless of whether we're here tonight. They would work with their tenants.
Except that if you're limiting the square footage of the area, and then you start reducing the capacity of each bin, you may not be able to have enough low bins to deal with that issue. So, it brings us back to the concerns that some of us have had about whether or not you can handle the volume of trash from multiple buildings in the same physical space that you have for individual buildings.
And the other thing that they might have to do is if it's necessary, add another pickup.
I appreciate your views as counsel. You hear somebody has some professional skills in this subject matter.
That can be handled by increasing the frequency. I mean, they will manage it and monitor it as a property manager. And if the bins are filling up faster than they expected, then they'll increase the pickup. You know. The opposite is if they don't fill up as quickly, they could cut back on the pickups if they so choose. But, you know, they, there is a property manager, and they will be, they will monitor it and be able to make those adjustments. If somebody is having trouble putting their garbage into those bins, there may be either a mechanism for the property manager to handle that for that particular resident or to have that resident just place it in the enclosure. And then, the property manager, the maintenance staff goes in and puts it into the dumpster.
Has there ever been a problem as it's currently configured with overflow garbage? That, or is everything fit into the existing bins as?
No.
Current, okay.
But we don't know what the occupancy rate is.
I don't know exactly how many, but there are.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public regarding the testimony of this witness? Yes, ma'am. Come up to the micro, yeah, come up to the microphone. Name and address, please.
Hong Yuan, 7 Montgomery Road.
Can you spell that, please?
Okay, Y U A N, that's my last name.
And first name?
H O N G.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm just curious to see, the new dumpster site, just by looking at it, do you have the turning template for your dumpster truck? Because if they come in, head in, take the truck, take the dumpster, dump it, and then do they back out or do they move around? If they have to keep going, they have to angle, right? If they angle, do you have enough room to back enough to go around the court? I didn't study anything. I'm just, by looking at it, because I'm a civil engineer too, so I'm just curious. Okay, that's it.
It's a very good question. This location allows for the truck to come up, pick up the garbage, back down Jubilee Court. And then, the other dumpster enclosure that it doesn't show on here, but just to the north of Building One, is the one that's remaining. So, they will come in, whether they come in and go around the building in a clockwise direction or if they come in through Gala Court. Either way, we didn't rerun the turning templates because we had already run them before. And we know that, given the width of the enclosure and the angle of the enclosure, that the trucks would be able to easily access those enclosure or that enclosure.
Ma'am, we didn't get your address, 7?
7 Montgomery.
Thank you.
Montgomery, thank you. Any other questions from the public? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Naveen Pentakota. I reside in.
Can you spell that, please?
Naveen, N A V E E N. And Pentakota, P E N T A K O T A.
And where's your address, sir?
2 Harrelson Court.
To what row?
2 Harrelson Court.
Yes.
So, the only comment I have is that I actually live in Building 10, as I mentioned.
Comment or question? We'll have it.
Comment.
Okay, so, right now, it's just questions for the witness as to his testimony. You will have an opportunity to give any comments under oath at the very end. So, you'll have an opportunity to do that. So, if it's a comment, we'll just move it a little bit later.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the witness? And nothing from the board?
One more, just for the heck of it. There's testimony that these dumpsters were installed after the market rate homes had been sold. Were the plans for Jubilee Court showing the dumpster locations at that time?
Yeah. I don't recall when we did the individual plot plans for those buildings around there, but, you know, here's the 2019 plans, and that's where the dumpsters were shown.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just confirming the, the brick face on the new dumpster, is that on four sides facing the school also?
Well, three sides because the front side is a double-leaf gate. But it is on all, yes, it's on the back as well, Mr. Radner.
Okay.
Now, are there any members of the board, of the public that would like to come up and make a sworn statement? And, Richard, if you can.
Sure, raise your right hand, sir. You swear to testimony, you give this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth?
I do.
All right, again, give us your full name and address for the record.
My name is Naveen Pentakota and residing at 2 Harrelson Court, Livingston.
Thank you. All yours.
Yeah, so, just to comment on what we were told at this point of time, this map was shown to us while I purchased the property, but never was it given information that it's going to be a dumpster or enclosure that's going to carry garbage, going right outside my door. So, that piece of information was never divulged to us, so I would just like to comment on that fact.
What are your thoughts with this?
I would be really happy if that could be executed as suggested by the Pulte home at this point of time because that's going to clear a lot of future problems which foresee could happen because of the stink or the smells and also like any kind of rodents, animals, infestation. All those things could happen really quickly once people start occupying all the 51 houses which have been in that area, right? So, that's the only point which I want to make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to make a sworn statement, either in favor of or in opposition to the application? Hearing none? Any closing remarks?
Just based on all the testimony we have and that you've heard tonight, we think we made our case. And if you could please grant us this amendment and give relief for the variance we're seeking. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The parties, having had opportunity to make closing statements, it appears to the chair that the applicant, all interested persons, and the board members have had reasonable opportunity to be heard that the evidentiary record of this hearing ought to be closed. Absent objection and in the absence of any motion for a continuance, the evidentiary record is closed. No further testimony or evidence shall be heard or received. The board members now have the opportunity to state and discuss their views on this application prior to a decision.
I'd just like to make an observation. I'd just like to make an observation, looking at the plans and listening to the testimony. We're concerned about the impact of the closeness of the trash bins to the market rate. If you look at the building number 3, it's also very close to the affordable units, and if that bin is being moved and consolidated elsewhere, there's a benefit to the residents of that building as well.
Yes, I would like to... I would like to make sure that the comments made by you gentlemen about the manager helping out if somebody has trouble reaching those, I think that should be in the record so that hopefully, we never have to remind you about that again. And the height issue, that's part of the height, and if they should get overloaded, we assume that you said they'll have extra pickups. That should be in the record also. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any other comments?
I know we talked about it briefly, but the gates that have to be opened, so you have a... You're creating a side door, correct, so that you don't have to open the gate to get into the garbage dumpster area, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that obviously will be a simple functioning gate that will, I guess, have some sort of a handle to close and lock behind it. And the gates in the front will be locked all the time, except when the garbage trucks come to take the containers and dump them.
They wouldn't be locked, but they would...
Be closed, yeah, understood, right. So they will be closed all the time.
So at this point, we can either have a motion to approve or disapprove, or a motion to give non-Biden guns to our attorney to prepare a resolution for consideration by the board. So I will leave that to the pleasure of the board. And you're seeking one variance for six inches where 28 feet is required, so there's only one variance requesting this application.
Correct. So there's a motion... Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Reber, any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, Jackie?
Mr. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Reber?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Diner?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you very much. So that was... That concludes our hearings for this evening. We thank you very much. We thank the public who was here. Thank you for your input, thank you for listening, and...
I do have a question, sorry. This is my first time public with planning board meetings.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. And I thought there will be a, like, public comment session, like the other, like, the town council meeting?
Yeah, right, in planning board meetings, there is no public comment session, section.
I was here at 2:25. I got here a little before, I'm sorry, 7:25, a little before 7:30, the meeting was not here. And I thought there would be talking about the site at the corner of North Field and South Livingston, or did I...
No, that's not a topic for tonight's meeting. And, you know, we are a quasi-judicial body, so we have applications, we have testimony from witnesses, the public can then question those witnesses. At the end of the application, the public can make sworn statements for or against that application, but what was just done before, just dealing with this application, but there is no public... This isn't like a meeting of the governing body where you can just come up and have a, you know, public comment on any subject.
I think you were referring to what was on the agenda for the conference session that began at 7:30. There, we do talk about an ordinance and various other things, but we do not hear from the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is the only time at which the public is heard from.
So at what time do we ever not have any opportunity to speak about that particular site?
Well, that...
Sorry, I have another question, I'm just learning.
Yeah, no, that opportunity is before the governing body when they're discussing the ordinance itself. Once, you know, once that comes over to us, we either say whether it's in accordance with the master plan or not in accordance with the master plan, or at the time of an application, which that application has already taken place, there's a time to ask questions of the witnesses, you know, and testimony. But, you know, the site plan for that location has already been approved.
So basically, it was a done deal?
Well, it's not a done deal, it's been... It was previously approved.
We had this...
We had the hearings a while ago.
Two or three years ago, went through the whole process that you heard just tonight, it was a very lengthy process, and we went through that years ago.
Yeah, so it wasn't a done deal. We, you know, the applicant went through this very process with testimony from witnesses, with members of the public coming up and asking questions. Today, dealing with that corner, the ordinance, the town council submitted a revision to that ordinance. Our... What we do with that ordinance is say whether it's consistent or inconsistent with the master plan. That's what... And then we can make some suggestions back. But that, the site plan for that project has already been... It was approved, you know, quite some time ago, through the same process with testimony, witnesses, public, you know, public questions, and public comment at the end on that particular application.
Also, just to add to that, that the conference portion where this was discussed is open to the public to be there, but you cannot comment.
Was that...
So you could have been there and listened to the discussion that went on during that session, but there is no public comment during the conference session.
But was that at 7:30 tonight?
That was at 7:30 tonight, in that room over there, where the conference room is.
There's a meeting room there.
Oh, I didn't know.
And there's another public entrance to it.
I was here early, but I was just sitting here and waiting. I was wondering why the meeting wasn't here at 7:30. I thought everything happened next year.
We hope you're becoming that other than in there.
Transition me to the series. Was it?
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, thank you.
It's a learning curve for me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, who was it? Who was doing...
I think it's... I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.